In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, P. 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this special meeting of the planning board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(In agreement with the Pledge of Allegiance) (In agreement with the Pledge of Allegiance) (In agreement with the Pledge of Allegiance) Counselman in barsen.
Okay, Erica, Sammy, and Rebecca all asked to be excused this evening. I'll go back to him. Theodore Chase?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Thank you for the easy operating microphone.
And Jennifer Ragnow is here as well. Mustafa Mansray? Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
And Chairman Norsini?
Here.
Counselman in barsen is walking in, so we'll just mark him here.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just one housekeeping. If anyone is here for Baldwist Realty LLC, that is carried to August 2nd, 2023, with no notification needed. So the two applications tonight are EWA Somerset and the Jane Center. We have no minutes, no resolutions, so we'll go right to public comments for any general planning comments that the public would like to make not related to the hearings tonight, which will have their own separate public opening. So with that, I make a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public for any general planning comment.
Debbie Stewart to Farrington Plaza, Somerset. Dr. Chase made light of the microphone situation. It's really not that funny when we're at that big place on Route 27, and we're paying professionals a lot of money to be there, and nobody can hear it. If there's anything within your power you can do to get better mics there, that would be greatly appreciated. Also, referring to that, and I hope my questions are not out of line for this particular segment. In regard to cross-examination of the attorney, from the attorneys, and public comment. I know most of the meetings I've gone to, there are time limits. Maybe that is not the case in these meetings, but I found that a lot of the line of questioning was repetitive, out of line, and it became a mockery of the system, in my opinion, in several of the past meetings. That's my opinion. I don't know if there's anything or who is responsible for reining that type of situation in. And, you know, it is a waste of time. The purpose of planning and zoning, which I don't have to tell, I'm sure anybody here, was, you know, that cities had to rationally plan to avoid ugly spillover into residential and other areas. And when one person's activity was not supposed to have a negative effect on another person's property. Now, most of the cases, this is going to be a large business versus a small person or neighborhood that doesn't have a lot of say or resources. But when this situation happens at the meetings, and people go off on tangents ad nauseam, the system is now stacked against the individual. It's in favor of the corporation and against the individual because we do not have the resources, whether it is me for any of the issues I might have, or anybody else in the Township of Franklin. And I've heard many of the arguments that residents have, but they can't fight it because they don't have unlimited resources. And if they are able to fight it, they're up against this delay, delay, stall, stall, and it's not right. And that is what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, move to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First hearing tonight is EWA Somerset 400 owner LLC. On this agenda, it says EWA. Yeah, if you want to do Jane first, we'll do Jane.
Well, I think we should do Jane first.
Okay, let's do, sorry. I'm just, I'm just reading. Here's proof.
It's true. They've shown it in that order on the agenda.
Right, because EWA was carried first, and then Jane was added on the, when I was out in Colorado. But because Jane is so small, they wanted to just do it and get it over with.
No problem.
No problem. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is John DeLuca of the firm Boris Golden-Foley, Yolo Hyman &amp; Stahl, on behalf of the applicant, Jane Center of New Jersey. We'll have two witnesses tonight. First, you'll hear from Mitch Ardmann, our professional engineer, and, oh, right. Well, first, we'll have a fact witness, the president of the board of the Jane Center, Minir Shaw. And then, then you'll hear from our expert engineer and professional planner. So I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know there's a big application after us, so.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we even start, I have an issue and a comment, I think. Well, it's related to the application and needs to be resolved before we get going. I've sat on three or four applications with this applicant for approvals for different things, including the original one when the building was built. This site application has an original condition attached to its original approval that the driveway had to be realigned or lined up with the driveway that is across the street coming out of the shopping center, not misaligned the way it is. I've spoken, and Mr. Lamford, who's represented this client many times, I've spoken to him, we've talked about it, he's well aware of it. It's never come up again. It's been mentioned at some of the other hearings. Nothing ever happens. I would think that when your client now is looking to put in a significant feature, like the gate, that this needs to be resolved once and for all because you're not going to do it and move it. And I agree with that. So what I'm asking you is, is this hearing now, or this application now, going to become one where you're going to ask for relief from that condition?
Well, if that condition still applies, then as the plans are presented today, yes, it would be necessary to seek relief from that condition.
I would hope so. If the condition still stands, it never goes, goes away.
Unless, unless.
One of the, one of the, one of the problems going back historically with this application, and I hope it's changed with the new one pending an approval, things get approved, and then it takes sometimes years for projects to be built.
It is.
And in the case of the original application, the project was approved. I would think almost within 48 hours, the whole eight or nine acres was clear cut and stood vacant for the next four or five years, and nothing happened. This applicant also has a pending approval for solar panels. It's years old. Nothing's happening. All right, so I would also hope that with the potential for this approval, and some other things maybe that, that go with it, that it will not only be started right away, it will be worked on continually till it's completed. You know, not five years hence, but you're going to formally then ask for relief from that condition, correct?
Correct. We will formally request relief from that condition. And additionally, additionally, to your point, Mr. Thomas, about things getting started quickly, my clients are in the room tonight. We have many board members of the Jane Center here tonight. We have the president of the board who intends to testify. So I, you know, rather than saying, I'll take my message back to my clients, my clients are here to hear your message, and I urge them as their legal counsel to, to press onward and fulfill their intended proposals, and those things that they get approval for here tonight. So as you pointed out, one of those things is a relief from a condition, aligning the driveway. As I look at the plan, it appears to be somewhat south of the driveway, across the street. And additionally, we are seeking amended preliminary site plan and final site plan approval, as well as three sign variances. So without further ado, if, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to swear in my first witness. And if you have further questions in terms of facts and timing, I'm sure he'd be able to answer them.
We actually have an issue. You, I'm sure you noticed for the three sign variances, correct?
Yes, and I do believe our notice also contains a catch-all phrase indicating that we're requesting all other necessary relief, which a relief from a condition I would hope be, would be covered under that statement.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, please.
Municipal Anus Law requires that if an applicant requests relief from a condition which the board finds to be significant, then that relief for the condition must have been in your notice. But this board must make a determination whether, in their opinion, the condition is significant. If it is, we can't hear your application tonight for jurisdictional reasons. If the board doesn't think it's significant, we can proceed.
Understood.
So given that this was a condition of the original approval, and still has not been done, I would think realigning two driveways is a pretty significant variance, and I would want that noticed. Because there may be people on Cedar Grove and elsewhere that would like to see those driveways aligned, and I would like to have the opportunity to review the applicant's reasoning for why they are seeking said relief. So I would want that to be noticed.
I'm in agreement.
I didn't bring it up to, to put it off. I understand the reasoning. I don't disagree with, with what you're saying. If the driveway to remain where it should have been in the first place, then their whole plan significantly changes.
Exactly.
And then it has to be reviewed all over again by the county and everybody else, so.
Right. No, that's, that's absolutely true. And if they wanted relief, they could have asked for it in the original application. They didn't, which is a presumption that they agreed to that condition, and now they're saying they want relief from it. So to me, that requires, you know, what you're saying.
If it all takes is another notice to the public, I don't see why we would not do the.
Yeah, I think it not only needs a notice to the public, but I mean, I would like to see the applicant offer a reason to the board in advance of the application that we can read and that we can understand. And like you said, being that Cedar Grove is county road, Somerset County might want to weigh in as well.
And they may also want to bring in a traffic expert. Looking around the dais, Mr. Chairman, I believe that everyone is in agreement with the fact that it is a significant condition, and the board therefore doesn't have jurisdiction because the notice is incomplete.
Understood. Thank you.
Before they leave, just for my edification, I don't think I was here when this application came. I'm just curious why there was no sidewalk included. Anyone know the history on that? Mark?
Why there was no what?
Sidewalk along the Cedar Grove, because oftentimes I frequent Mo's Restaurant there. Don't judge me.
When, when this was originally approved, sidewalks weren't politically correct, if you want to put it that way.
It was probably 25 years ago.
Good to see things have changed.
They, they are, they are proposing it in this application. They've constructed across their frontage, so at least we don't have to worry about that.
Thanks, thanks.
The message has gotten out. All right, thank you.
Right. Good night.
Okay.
John, what, what are we doing with them? Are you, you're, are we rescheduling them now, or what do you want to do?
I guess we don't have to, so Jim, we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to, obviously, we're not noticing to a certain meeting because they're going to notice.
We're not carrying the notice.
Yeah, as we require more notice, I'll have to get back to unscheduling. Thank you.
Okay.
Good point.
Yeah, so just, again, so if there is any public, we're not announcing the next meeting, there'll be a new notice, and you'll be told in that, in that notice when the hearing is.
Thanks, Mark. Exactly. Okay, so EWA Somerset after all.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer.
You, you need to, yeah.
Hello?
Perfect.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Jennifer Porter. I'm an attorney with.
I have no idea. Hundreds of meetings, that sound has never happened.
Ready? Third time's a charm. Here we go. Good evening, I'm Jennifer Porter. I'm an attorney with Kieza, Shehennian, and Gian Tomasi, located in West Orange, New Jersey. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, EWA Somerset 400 owner LLC. Notice, as I previously discussed with the board attorney, was previously published and mailed in accordance with the MLUL, originally in connection with the May 17th, 2023 hearing, and the application was carried without further notice. Notice was republished in connection with the July 19th meeting and further carried to tonight's meeting. So we believe the applicant has jurisdiction to proceed, and a copy of our affidavit of publication and mailing was provided to the board secretary in connection with tonight's hearing. EWA Somerset is here this evening seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and bulk variance relief in connection with the proposed development of property commonly known as 400 Atrium Drive and 600 Atrium Drive. They are designated as Block 468.01, lots 21.06 and 2114 on the tax maps of the township. More specifically, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing improvements, which include just under 350,000 square feet of office space and over 1,500 parking spaces on the nearly 28-acre property. Applicant is also intending to consolidate the two development lots and construct two warehouse buildings. The first warehouse building would be approximately 255,000 square feet with two potential office areas. The second building would be approximately 115,000 square feet with two potential office areas. In addition, the site will include collectively 259 parking spaces, 76 loading berths, 17 trailer parking spaces, and various other site amenities, which will be described in detail in the testimony this evening. Those amenities and site features also include a fire lane, lighting and landscaping, modifications to the emergency services through connection at Napoleon Court, and modifications to Atrium Drive, which is an existing private roadway. The property, just for a little background, is located within the township's Business and Industry Zone, BI Zone. And although warehouses are no longer permitted in the BI Zone, this application was deemed complete prior to the effective dates of the two township ordinances, 4371-22 and 4391-22. And the township previously determined that these ordinances do not apply to this application, so therefore this use is permitted as of right pursuant to this application and the zoning requirements in effect as of the time of the application, including specifically the 2020 zoning amendments relating to the BI Zone and the related master plan amendments that created the BI Zone, would apply. In connection with this proposal, applicant is seeking bulk variance relief with regards to minimum front yard parking setback, and that would be for Building B only. We're requesting 50 feet, whereas, or excuse me, 50 feet is required, whereas we're requesting 33 feet proposed along our Atrium Drive extension. Our second variance, bulk variance, is for a required length of loading berths, where 147 feet is required, and we're requesting 135 feet for Building A and 130 feet for Building B, which you'll hear about, that based on our truck turning template, WB67 can adequately maneuver. In addition, we're seeking a variance in connection with the width of the proposed driveway between the two warehouses to allow three additional feet, so it's 39 feet versus 36 feet required to match the existing roadway width of Atrium Drive. In addition to that, we are also seeking some design waiver relief, which will be detailed again in the testimony. It's important to note, for us to note as part of the record, that this project has evolved significantly over the course of the past several months, in particular, the last six months. The applicant has worked and had several meetings with staff and engaged in important and significant discussions in terms of the overall design of the site and some of the original relief that we're seeking. So as a result of those conversations, we wanted to note that initially the applicant had sought an impervious coverage variance, but after discussions with township staff, including the planner, the engineer, as well as the economic development director, we did reevaluate and reduce the size of the proposed buildings and design so that we could come into compliance with that requirement. In addition, the applicant also removed all parking from the front yard, with the exception of the limited number of spaces which are in front of Building B, which fronts on the Atrium Drive extension, and so essentially fronts more like a driveway than a road, and increased the setback at this location as well, from 11 feet to 33 feet. Among the significant benefits of this proposed development is that it's going to allow for the redevelopment of vacant office buildings and underutilized property in an area of the township that is extremely well-suited for the proposed use. If there is anywhere within the township that a warehouse is appropriately situated, it would be here. The property is situated along Atrium Drive, a private road with direct access out to Davidson Avenue, and the site joins I-287 at its northerly end and is within direct proximity to 287, a regional transportation corridor, which you will hear more about from our traffic consultant, and which is consistent with the purposes of the BI Zone, which you'll hear more about from our planner. The site is surrounded by commercial and industrial development, including light industrial and other warehouse development, and is not located adjacent to or near, nor is any access proposed through any residential areas. As you will hear from our traffic engineer, access to the property from 287 will be via Eastern Avenue to Davidson to Atrium, and vice versa for access from the property. In addition, the warehouse buildings, as you'll hear from our architect, are attractively designed and landscaped with a significant number of plantings, as you will see in the renderings to be shown this evening. Other benefits to the site include EV charging, rooftop solar, the fire lane, as we'll discuss, and as I mentioned, the architecture of the building. No idling signage will be provided, as well as bike storage. Before I close, I'd like to say a little bit about the applicant. Woodmont Industrial Partners, who are partnering with EverWest in connection with the development of the site, are an affiliate of the New Jersey-based Woodmont Properties, which is a leading national real estate company established here in New Jersey in 1963, which, which owns, manages, and develops industrial properties. Over the past five or six years, Woodmont has purchased, developed, and/or redeveloped over 6 million square feet in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and the surrounding states. And as a New Jersey-based company, Woodmont has developed or redeveloped over 2.5 million square feet in municipalities across the state of New Jersey, including sites in Woodbridge, South Brunswick, South Amboy, Clinton, the Meadowlands, Alpha, and Raway. Representatives of the applicant are here this evening and are here to address any questions that the board may have in connection with this application. To address the application in greater detail, we intend to call several witnesses as follows. First, Craig Styers of Styers Associates, our civil engineer to my left. Philip Rogeri of Rogeri and Partners, our architect, will go second, followed by Carl Penkey, our traffic engineer from Lang and Engineering. And we will conclude with John McDonough of John McDonough Associates, our planner. We did receive comment letters in connection with this application from Mr. Healy, CME Associates, the Environmental Commission, the Health Department, the Franklin Township Police Traffic Safety Bureau, and the Franklin Township Sewage Authority. These comments will be discussed and referenced throughout the testimony this evening, and we can comply with the vast majority of the comments, except as otherwise discussed or stipulated to this evening. Moreover, the project team, as I indicated before, has met with the township engineer, economic development director, and the planner on multiple occasions, and had calls and correspondence with them throughout the entire application review process in order to ensure that this proposed development is in keeping with the township's objectives for this area. So if the board has no questions for me, we'd like to begin.
No, that was, that was a very nice preliminary. Oh, you, go ahead, go ahead, Jim. Legal always takes precedence.
No, not always. I just, I just wanted to ask whether the basis for the variance relief will be the C2 analysis, so I can understand the testimonies that comes in.
I'm saying yes, but I wanted to confirm. Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. McDonough.
So as you noted, the plans have changed quite a bit, I think, since the first iteration. And you did a very nice job of highlighting where variances have gone away and what you can comply with. So I'm sure, I, I see some, at least one familiar face for the board, but there's probably others. If you focus on really what you either can comply with or, or want the board to understand, rather than, yeah, exactly.
Absolutely. That is, that is our full intention. Just to focus on anything where we may have comments or would require further input.
Okay. And we'll, we'll do board questions after each of your witnesses, and we'll do one opening to the public at the end.
Okay. I know the board obviously knows Mr. Styers. Would you like me to qualify him?
We.
Or do you tend to accept experts? I'm happy to have him qualify himself for the board.
As long as he's still licensed in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, I am.
Mr. Craig Styers, would you raise your right hand, sir? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
You've been previously accepted by this board?
Yes.
And your credentials, have they changed in any way negatively since you were last accepted?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Styers, did you prepare the site plan submitted to the board in advance of tonight's hearing?
Yes.
Great. Could you begin by walking the board through the existing conditions, and then talk about the key features of the site plan?
Sure. I have a aerial photograph of the site on screen. It is bounded by a red line, as you can see on there. The existing site is situated on the south end of Atrium Drive. Eastern Avenue exit is right here off of 287, and then Davidson Avenue, I think I can just pan back, actually. Just off the screen, off the top here.
Which sheet is this in your site plan set?
This would be an exhibit.
It is an exhibit?
Yeah.
All right, because it's different?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Prepared under your direction and control?
Yes.
A1, please.
Got it.
And then those at the bottom of the screen are different commercial buildings on World's Fair Drive, correct, at back?
Yes, yeah, I'll go through that. So what we have here is Atrium Drive comes down here and into the site. And as I said, bounded by the red line is the site itself. The light, the site consists of two lots, Lot 21.06 and 21.14. The total property, the gross acreage is just over 30 acres, but as we mentioned, that Atrium Drive is a private road, so there's a right-of-way, but it's still part of the property, so it's more of an easement. As part of the discussions with your staff, and to be more concise and consistent with other applications, we decided to take the net of the property. So we took out the right-of-way of Atrium Drive. So that net area is 27.9 acres between the two properties. As you can see, Lot 21.06, which is essentially right here, is fully developed with a five-story office building, 1,540 parking spaces, two detention basins that are in the front. This location, they're actually wet basins. And then the remaining property, 21.14, is at the northerly end. That is a vacant piece at the, at this time. It should be noted that the subdivision and development of, of the Hampton Inn and this portion of Atrium Development That is a vacant piece at the, at this time. It should be noted that the subdivision and development of, of the Hampton Inn and this portion of Atrium Development has been undeveloped since nineteen eighty-two. So we got approval for the hotel, which is the Hampton Inn, but prior to that, which is in two thousand and fifteen, this property has essentially remained vacant since nineteen eighty-two. The lots are also part of the original Atrium at Somerset subdivision from nineteen eighty-two. The subdivision itself created Atrium Drive and the lots pretty much fronting on Atrium Drive throughout, throughout the roadway itself. The tract is in the B1 business and industry zone, which is proposed, is permitted. As part of the original approval, as I noted, there are two detention basins in the, in the front here. There's four more basins that were part of the Atrium at Somerset, all built out or approved, designed, approved, and constructed as part of the overall development. And they were designed for fifty-five percent coverage of all of the lots. The surrounding properties to the north have Route 287, as I noted, the off-ramp to Eastern Avenue. To the south is the World's Fair Industrial Park. You have World's Fair Drive in this location right here. So these are all flex buildings along Atrium Drive. To the south, you have 500, 700 Atrium Drive. At this point, also two vacant office buildings. You have another office building to the, to the west. As I said before, the Hampton Inn being constructed right now, the Doubletree just behind that. And the location right here is another application that's coming before you next month, the Puleo Project, which is another warehouse building. As far as the proposed conditions, flip to the second rendering. So this would be A2. This is not part of the set. Jim? So what we are doing is we are going to consolidate Lot 21.06 and 2114 into one lot, as noted, just under twenty-eight acres. And the project will include a demolition, demolition of the five-story building as well as the fifteen-hundred-and-forty parking spots. Once the improvements, existing improvements are removed, a new two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand square foot warehouse in this location here, as well as a hundred-and-fifteen-six-hundred-square-foot warehouse in this location here. The project complies with the impervious coverage after a couple iterations. As Jen said, we've met with your staff a couple times. Originally, we came in with a coverage variance. We came back again utilizing the gross acreage, also revised it to ultimately comply with the net acreage and the sixty, sixty percent coverage of the zone. The larger building will have a hundred-and-seventy-six parking spaces, six ADA spaces, eight EV spaces, forty-four loading docks, and seventeen trailer parking spaces. The smaller building will have eighty-three parking spaces, four ADA spaces, four EV spaces, and thirty-two loading berths. The landscaping, originally we had proposed two-hundred-and-fifty-nine, what is submitted before you. It was noted in the boat, two reports regarding the review of the current application regarding the easterly line in this location here. But what we've done since we were put off last month at the last meeting, we took the opportunity to locate those trees as Mark requested. And ultimately, at this point, we have a net deficiency of trees to be planted. We are, based on the new computations, because all of those trees, as you can see here, we had proposed trees in these, in this location, whereas those existing trees will remain. So by swapping them out, we have a required of a hundred-and-ninety-four trees, and at this point, we will have a hundred-and-seventeen proposed. But we would work, should the application be approved, work with Mark to get that to be a hundred-and-ninety-four trees at a minimum. In addition to those trees, we are proposing to plant almost seven-hundred shrubs and, as well in the proposed basins to the north, another forty-two trees, and over twelve-thousand plugs or grasses in the bottom of the basin. The variances that we're asking for, as Jen said before, is our thirty parking spots in front of the smaller building in this location here. But as noted, they are, they front on Atrium Drive extension. Atrium Drive extension was part of the subdivision of the overall tract and the creation of the two lots in the rear here. With the combination of Lot 21.14, essentially Atrium Drive extension is a access or driveway to the property in the back here. Like I said, the application coming before you next month. So instead of this being really a roadway, it's more of a driveway than anything else. One of the things we have done is shown some significant landscaping both on this side and then as, when we did the application for the Hampton Inn, there is also significant plantings on their frontage. So we think between the two that the, although this is a variance for the front yard, that these thirty parking spaces would be well buffered. Additionally, we are also asking for a variance in the truck court. The ordinance requires a hundred-and-forty-seven feet for a WB sixty-seven, and we are proposing a hundred-and-thirty-five feet for the larger building and a hundred-and-thirty feet for your smaller building. It should be noted that your engineering review for the application did not have an issue with the, the waiver of those distances. There'll be a, I guess, a design waiver or exception for the size of the plans, and just because of the size of the site, we had to use the thirty, thirty-by-forty-two sheets. Sidewalks, we are asking for a variance for that for the, the entire frontage of Atrium Drive. We are provo, providing an interconnect between the two buildings, and we are also providing a sidewalk that would connect to the sidewalk in front of the Hampton Inn. It should be noted that that sidewalk leads to the Doubletree where there is a shuttle service for public transportation. So we feel that, that that's satisfactory. I think that's really it as far as the, the overall proposed conditions. The fire truck turning templates, we did show. Obviously, with the back here, the fire truck can get easy access and be able to turn. There is a fire lane in this location on the northerly side of the small building, and we have shown a, a turning template in that fire lane. If we need to show it in other places, we can also add it to the plan. Last thing is the stormwater. We have had, like I said, a number of iterations with your, your staff, most particularly your engineer. We've also had correspondence with the DEP regarding green infrastructure, the current regulations, how it's to be designed. What we really wanted to do is preserve those two basins that are in front of the larger building. If the site were to change significantly, so if we had a greater impervious coverage draining to those basins or a greater area, those basins would have to be removed and then comply with green infrastructure. So we have coordinated and contacted the DEP regarding trying to leave those basins, and if we reduce the motor vehicle surface area to those basins, as well as maintain or reduce the impervious coverage to those basins, they could be, remain intact. So that's another one of the design features that we did with the basins or with this project. Remainder, obviously, you can see that there are a number of basins on the northerly side in this location. Those basins do comply with green infrastructure. They are bio-retention basins. We did two or three rounds of testing as far as the groundwater recharge. There is no recharge on the site, so those basins will have underdrains that ultimately convey to the outlet structure just because of the soil conditions. As far as the remaining comments in the report, we will work with the staff. I believe that most of the comments remaining are really documentation, tables, further details, just to confirm that the, the design meets the, the current stormwater standards, which we believe it does. So it's, again, just working with the staff to provide that additional information. As far as the lighting is concerned, what we have on the plans before you that are submitted, they did not comply with the ordinance. We actually have an updated design that does comply. So that, that is also not an issue. So I think I've kind of covered the, the big items. I don't know if there's any questions from the board?
Just, what is your new impervious coverage?
Fifty-nine point five-eight percent.
Yeah.
And that's of the, the net area, like I said.
Okay. I, I do notice that you're still significantly over in parking required versus what you propose. Can you explain why you feel you need so much parking? Is the warehouse use known that you're going to actually need that much parking, or is it a spec where you just are deciding to construct that?
I, I think it's more of a industry standard that the, that our client is looking to meet. I think at this point, it's actually a little bit below what their typical standards are. So, I mean, that's...
So when you say your client, you actually do have a tenant in mind?
I don't believe so. Our client, who's Woodmont, so...
Okay.
Who we're working for to get the, the site approved.
Okay. So, I mean, obviously, as you probably know, we've done a lot of warehouses in the last couple of years, and, and mostly the parking is below, below what you're proposing and even, even below what's recommended. I mean, I would suggest that, you know, you look into banking, whereas if you don't need it, you don't need to construct it, and, and that will further reduce your impervious coverage, because it's a lot of parking on both, you know, for both buildings, much more than we typically see. And if there's a reason for it, you know, at least it can be banked rather than constructed right away, especially since you don't have a tenant. Whereas if you have a tenant, that's going to need far less parking and you have all those spaces, I don't, I don't think that kind of justifies the benefit.
Sorry.
Do I have any other questions for Mr. Stires at this time?
A few questions, Mr. Chairman, over here.
Oh, oh, go ahead. And then I think Ted.
Ted, you want to go first? Okay. Okay. So just to clarify, on the, well, first, Napoleon, that's emergency access only, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you mentioned the, the trees, the existing trees. I guess you're going to keep that existing curb line to the left of Napoleon on the site? So that, that's why those existing evergreens, yeah, that...
In this area?
To the left, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're going to keep that existing curb line, then those, that's why those mature trees are going to stay?
Yes.
Okay. To the right of Napoleon, is there any additional screening proposed?
Not right now. There are trees in that, in that location, but we have a wall in that area. So, you know, again, like I said, we can propose, it's kind of tight in there because I want to maintain the swell that comes off of the properties from, from the east or, I guess, southeast. So there is a swell that's coming down here. So if we were to cut this off, it may compromise some of the runoff from their properties. So we, we can, you know, I think you mentioned a fence in your, in your review. So we can put a fence on top of the wall or provide some kind of screening there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not the most critical issue in the world because obviously there are office buildings and flex buildings next door, but it is the rear of the building. It might conceivably be visible from World's Fair Drive, so if you can fit a fence in there...
Yeah.
I think that'd be a good thing to do. And then the 194 figure you mentioned, is that, is that the resulting tree replacement requirement after you take these existing trees into account?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you're going to, on your plan, you're going to meet that 194?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we obviously have room. We can supplement along that, the slope right there with the existing trees, and we have some room at the north end. So like I said, you know, I'll work with you and, but the intent would be to at least meet the 194.
Okay. All right, that, those are my questions. Thank you.
Ted?
Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that you've taken note of the trees along the, the easterly boundary, which I had noticed when I visited the site, and that you're keeping the two existing detention basins. And one thing I noticed on the plans is that there are four trees on the slope leading to the more southerly basin, the left hand in the figure, that are eighteen to twenty-four inches. And I was hoping that you could keep those four trees. And after all, you know, since they're that big, they have a requirement for three to five new trees to be planted, but if they're removed, so it would reduce your tree undercount. And it's just always so much better to keep existing trees wherever possible, and I hope that you can do that as much as possible along even the east, the more northerly portion of the eastern side of the park. And I wonder, why do you have three small basins there at the north end? Is this some quirk of the DEP?
That's a good way to put it. As part of the new regs, the, the basins cannot have more than two and a half acres of drainage area to them. So back in the day, I would have that as one big one, but in order to meet the green infrastructure and all the requirements, quirk is a polite way to put it, but yes, that's the reason that we have the three different basins in there.
Now, because I can see these basins, if they're distributed around the development, but to put them all cheek by dowl next to each other seems strange, but, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, with a warehouse type of use, it's tough to implement little basins. I mean, they'd be very, very little, and you'd have twenty of them. So this is kind of, I guess you could say, a compromise between the two of them.
Yeah, well, partly because you're keeping the, the two over by Atrium Drive.
Right.
And, oh, those were my, I was just hoping that you could combine them because then you wouldn't have to go so far to the north, and you could save a couple of substantial locust trees there. If there's any way that you can arrange those basins to save those trees, they're not as important perhaps as maple and oak, but there's, the plan shows a couple of substantial ones. And at some point, some clearing there to the east, probably before you got involved. One other thing, so that's my major things. I have one other minor point. I was looking at the landscape plan for Lot 21.14, and it shows in listing what's to be planted. It shows red chokeberry twice with reference to two different scientific names, Phultenia perifolia and Aronia abutifolia. Is, is this an error, is one of those not red chokeberry, but something else like it?
It might be just a coordination of the, kind of, the, an audit of the, the table to correspond with the plan set.
Well, if you can just, I mean, obviously, this is more a, just a nomenclature question than anything substantial on the ground. If Aronia abutifolia L, L there means it was originally described... And if Aronia abutifolia L, L there means it was originally described by Linnaeus in 18th century Sweden, so is it a native species to New Jersey?
Well, that was, that's one of the, so we do have conditional approval with the DNR Canal Commission, and that's one, the one condition is to make sure that everything is native to New Jersey, so...
Yeah, yeah. The environmental captain likes to see that. I think we ought to be using red cedar a lot more instead of, obviously, always the problem with white pine, that eventually the lower branches drop. And the pines along the east boundary are holding up pretty well, though, so... Okay, I think that's my questions then, but please try as much as possible to save those four trees along the most southerly basin.
Okay.
You know, if you were cutting back on parking places, you might be able to cut back a few more parking places at that end and move the driveway closer to the building and give you a little more room.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a suggestion. We are getting some feedback, so just a suggestion that when you're not speaking, to turn your mic off, maybe that'll help, okay? To the degree that these are much, much better than the other room, even this room's getting some issues.
I just wanted to confirm something from myself. You said there were fifteen hundred parking spaces before?
Yes.
Okay, I think it's important to get the information out there for the public, because warehouses have acquired a very negative reputation around here, because there's so many of them. There actually were, not long ago, fifteen hundred cars going in and out of that facility twice a day, on top of the fifteen hundred cars that were going in and out of the other two vacant buildings. So it'd be pretty hard for someone to complain that this is significant traffic impact. In addition to that, am I correct in thinking that there's absolutely normally no reason for a regular citizen to go back there unless they actually have some type of business with one of the two warehouses that are there?
Yeah.
There's nothing, there's nothing there. This is not a site that's attracting pass or by traffic. People that go to the two hotels will be going directly, specifically, to those places, and there's no, my mind, there's no negative traffic impact. Any truck that comes to your facility that doesn't go directly to Davidson Avenue to get on 287, where there's a north-south exit to take advantage of, I think the driver should be looked at for something being, you know, wrong.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. You kind of probably stole some of our traffic engineer's testimony, but I'll let him follow up with that, too. But it's, definitely agree with what you're saying.
Chairman, one follow-up question?
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
So just to clarify, the cul-de-sac that's on the left side of the plan, there's no park, the parking is not within fifty feet of that easement?
No.
Atrium Drive?
No.
Okay. So that was one of the plan changes?
Yes.
Okay. So, real quick, just so the board understands the discussion of the net and the gross, we do have a number of applications around Atrium Drive. And Atrium Drive, as has been described as a private road, is a private road within an easement. For zoning purposes, I treat Atrium Drive just like a public road. So to the degree that parking needs to be outside of the front yard setback, buildings need to be out of the front yard setback, things like building cover and impervious coverage are also calculated exclusive of that easement, so it's kind of apples to apples. So that was kind of part of that discussion. So again, you know, when, to the degree that the public may not traverse Atrium Drive, they still can, and again, I treat it for zoning purposes like it's a public street. And I know at the expense of, or that perhaps maybe I'm stealing their planners' thunder a little bit, so the one variance that they do have for the parking lot setback is from that Atrium Drive extension. Craig, could you highlight that?
Right here.
So, I think that, I'll just offer my opinion, that variance is less significant than if it was on the rest of Atrium Drive. Atrium Drive, if the public was to drive through there, they would not know whether it's a public or private street. To them, it's just a street. I think that driveway, it's called Atrium Drive Extension because it's within this easement. If they had subdivided it differently, I think for all practical purposes, that's going to be a driveway between a warehouse and a hotel to access another smaller warehouse. Nobody's ever going to think that that is, it's not going to look even like a public road. So I'll just offer that, to the degree to that particular variance, I've been kind of beating the applicant up as far as the other setbacks and things like that on Atrium Drive, and they've complied with those requests. I'm not as concerned about that variance.
Thanks, Mark. That's very helpful.
I have a concern about the, I think you were seeking not to do the sidewalks along your property boundary.
Right.
I disagree with the take on that. I think it's necessary, from a healthy commercial site development standpoint, there are two hotels. And at a minimum, as we're doing these commercial developments, I always wonder if people design them thinking as if their employees are going to go out for a walk. We should be encouraging more employees to go out for a walk around here, because we have our retail, commercial businesses that are trying to cater to people in that area to stay alive, you know, physically. So if I was working, I would at a minimum want to go out inside and walk, and I think we should be providing opportunities for that. So I don't see a reason not to do the sidewalk when other sidewalks are nearby.
If I could just add to that, the very fact that there's a hotel, I think hotel guests are even more likely to go out for a walk than employees in your warehouse. So the building of hotels really suggests having more sidewalks.
Well, like I said, we are connecting to the hotels themselves, so there is a connection, it's just a matter of not going out all the way out in front of the basins and along Atrium Drive.
Yeah, but they're wet bases, and people want a loop. And so by extending that, you extend the ability to walk further, and there's going to be truck traffic. And right now, without that sidewalk, you're exposing them potentially to a more dangerous environment. The sidewalk would fully protect against that. That's one part. The other part, I'm curious, why not connect, I know you said it's a private roadway. This is still better than the other site. Why not connect the road all the way through to the adjacent roadway? What's the name of that road to the south?
Napoleon Court?
Yes, why not connect it fully?
That was part of yours, the township staff, they did not want that to go all the way through, because that would become a cut-through. People would be coming up World's Fair and cutting through this site to get up to Davidson Avenue.
Which people?
Anybody.
The testimony was that it wouldn't feel like it was that accessible, so why are we concerned about a cut-through?
The staff was pretty adamant about, so we just made it a, at this point, it was emergency access.
I really like Franklin Township's staff. I disagree with that.
Noted.
I think part of that rationale was that World's Fair Drive, you can't make a left to get back onto 287. So if the trucks were to go out there, then they would be going, you know, around and more into the rest of the township, as opposed to out Atrium to Davidson to 287. And basically, that there was enough access, sufficient access, you know, by this design. That was part of the rationale.
That's why I like Franklin Township's staff. I agree with Mark. So I would take that back, knowing that that's the only way out. I'll take it back.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Charles.
So if there's no more questions, you remain sworn in. If there is something that crosses over, you can proceed to your next witness.
Great. Okay, Mr. Rogeri, could you please begin by stating your name and address for the record, and then we'll proceed in swearing you and moving forward with your qualifications.
Philip Rogeri, Principal Architect at Rogerian Partners in West Upper Township, and Project Architect for this project.
Raise your right hand, sir. Tell me, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go.
I do.
Thank you.
Great. Now, Mr. Rogeri, could you please state your education and professional background for the board?
Sure. I was educated at Iowa State University, graduated in 1972, and had been practicing architecture since that time. Have approximately forty-five years in the business, and am licensed in several states, but most importantly, New Jersey.
And have you previously testified in front of boards in the state of New Jersey?
I have many boards in the state of New Jersey.
He's accepted as licensed architect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Rogeri, did you prepare the architectural plans and renderings which were submitted in connection with this application?
I did.
Great. Could you please begin by walking the board through the design of this site?
Sure. Can you bring up, can you bring the plans up? Well, both of them, probably, just real quickly.
I'm going to try to step you through the architecture very quickly. It's, I mean, there's plenty to talk about, but I think the renderings are, you know, the thing that you're most interested in seeing. We do have, we do have two plans. I just want to talk about the plans for a little bit. What we do in these buildings, as required by the Uniform Fire Code in the state of New Jersey, is provide access to the building at 125 feet for the fire company to get into the building. That's a requirement. These buildings comply with that. You'll see many, many doors, that's for firemen access. The exterior walls of the building are concrete, sometimes precast, sometimes tilt-up, I'm not sure we really know which yet. And the roof of the building is steel frame, and it's going to be prepped to, it'll be solar-ready, so, you know, we have plenty of structure there to put solar panels on the roof. Oh, there are options for small offices. You'll see them in the corners of the building. They don't typically get to be very big. There may be, if any, they're five percent of the total area of the warehouse, that somebody will put an office in the warehouse. And then maybe in the back of the warehouse somewhere, you'll get a little shipping and receiving office or something of that nature. And so that's, this building, it drains in two directions, I believe, right? Drains to the front and to the back. All the drainage is tied into underground stormwater. No drainage is spilled on the grade. So it's all piped underground. So both buildings are essentially the same. I'm not going to bore you with the elevations here. These are the building elevations. They sure to demonstrate the fact that we have a building height that doesn't exceed forty-seven feet from the average grade in the front of the building. So we're complying with the height of the buildings. So these are the renderings. This is a view over, you know, one of the stormwater ponds. That's a shot of the corner. The other thing I'd like for you to notice is that the fact that we do painting on the building and kind of horizontally create a horizontal image with various paints, so that essentially the height of the building is kind of reduced to human scale. When you look at the building and you keep seeing the horizontal planes, that helps reduce the overall height of the building. This is the other view, again, over the pond, shows both buildings, the one corner of the larger building and the corner of the smaller building. Essentially, that's what the buildings look like.
Mr. Rogeri, I don't believe these two renderings were previously provided in connection with the application, so these would need to be marked into evidence as A3 and A4, and these were prepared by you under your supervision?
Well, they're prepared by my artist consultant, under my supervision.
Right.
A3 and A4, then?
I think they're going to be very nice, quite frankly. I think Franklin Township will be...
Wouldn't they have nicer with a sidewalk out front and people walking there? Wouldn't you agree?
I plead the fifth.
I know you would.
And could you just briefly address, there was a question in the comments regarding screening of equipment? Is it your intention that all equipment will be adequately screened on site?
Well, generally speaking, the equipment for these buildings are placed on the roof, but they're placed, they're set back far enough on the roofline so that, you know, you have to literally be miles away to see them. So from any street view around these buildings, you won't see rooftop manate units.
Okay. If that's your testimony, just open it up to the board for any questions. Go ahead, Jim.
I just want to confirm that the parking analysis was based upon the number of square feet that are shown on the floor plan. Will I make sure that the parking calculation was based upon the number of square feet of office space in the floor plan?
Yes.
Okay. Applicant may want to consider requesting a little bit more, especially since they don't have a tenant. I've been in three or four situations lately where the applicant has had to come back because they didn't have enough office space, but that's up to you. It shouldn't be a problem because you're overparked.
Okay, if there's no other board questions, you can go down to your next witness.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much.
For our third witness, I'd like to call Carl Penkey. If you could begin with your name and address for the record?
Yes, again, name is Carl Penkey with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services, located at University Plaza in West Windsor, New Jersey.
Mr. Carl Penkey, sir, please raise your right hand. Tell me, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go.
I do.
Have you testified previously before this board?
I have in the past, yes.
Have your credentials changed since you were last accepted?
They have not.
Accepted.
Great. Mr. Penkey, could you begin by walking us through your traffic analysis for this site?
Certainly. So associated with this application, I did prepare a memorandum preparing a traffic comparative analysis, dated March 12th of, or April 14th of 2020, I'm sorry, March 12th of 2022, and then a supplemental, little analysis of truck turning movements in April of this year. Basically, as we heard from Mr. Thomas before, this site, as you're aware, is developed. It was previously occupied by a rather substantial office building of about 350,000 square feet, supported by over 1,500 parking spaces. This site is well-positioned in terms of its location for commercial development, including the industrial development. We have great connectivity through Atrium Drive out to Davidson Avenue, and ultimately connecting to the I-287 regional roadway system, which is what makes this site attractive for both the prior uses when they were active, as well as current proposed reuse of the property. From a traffic perspective, as noted, this site has, in the past, been very active. The roads leading to the site were designed to handle much higher levels of traffic associated with office and employment. But just a few facts and figures for the record, based upon a projected use of the site by the types of tenants that would be interested in occupying these spaces, we would expect somewhat in the order of 400 less vehicles per hour generated during morning and evening commuter hours, a rather substantial reduction than just reoccupying the existing office building. And over the course of the day, we'd probably see a... And over the course of the day, we'd probably see approximately two thousand eight hundred vehicles per hour reduction to the adjacent system. So, the reuse of this property is resulting in a less intensive use in terms of traffic impacts. And that being said, the, the surrounding road system, access Atrium Drive, are designed to accommodate the much higher traffic. So, from that standpoint, I believe that this application creates a positive actual impact to the adjacent roadway system. With regard to the site circulation, it's, it's fairly straightforward, it's typical to the type of warehouse that has been proposed and is typically occupied. The design waiver for the truck court is appropriate, it meets general industry standards, and it'll accommodate the type of activity in that location associated with the operation ability. And as noted, I think there was a comment, this isn't attractive to anybody that, than, other than the people that work here. Public, you're not having general public travel behind these buildings or in these areas, these are the business areas of the tenants, and really will be limited to that type of activity. So, I think that the granting of that is appropriate. With regard to the parking supply, I do understand your ordinances, I do believe they are a little bit on the low side in terms of the market. Data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in Parking Generation, the latest edition, has various data points. One of the data points is basically ninety-fifth percentile require, identified analysis of the, the various data, and that would suggest that the site would be appropriately parked with closer to four hundred parking spaces. But I will also, at the same time, note that the average peak parking demand seen in that database, which does vary by type, is, is a little bit less than two hundred spaces. So, we're coming in someplace in between that, we think it's an appropriate number. It creates a proper balance to market this site to the, to the industry and the type of tenants. It creates flexibility for shift work and making sure adequate circulation and safe movement of vehicles in and out, if they're resident, that tends to do some shift work. And, and a lot of times, that's why you'll see, you go to these types of warehouses, most during the middle of the day, you'll see them half vacant, but that doesn't mean during that half-hour period that there might be a need for spaces. So, in my opinion, that the number of spaces would be appropriate for the site. Aside from that, I, I think we, we concur with the comments from CME with regard to some adjustments at the access drives on Atrium Road, to ensure that we're accommodating the design vehicle, and that'll be incorporated in the final plans.
Thanks, and, you know, with banking of spaces, I think the reason the board really is suggesting that is because you don't have a tenant. And most warehouses, the office space is fairly minimal compared to the size of the warehouse. Of course, it does matter how many employees you have, you know, and what that warehouse is used for. And I'm sure traffic generation manuals take into account the different warehouse types and uses, but since we don't know, you wouldn't be having to come back, I mean, we would grant you the spaces, we're just saying, don't construct them all until you have a tenant that knows you need them. If you were over impervious coverage, we might have a slightly different conversation, but that's not, that's not the case anymore, so. But still, it helps, because if your ultimate tenant doesn't need them, and you, you haven't spent the money to construct them, we don't have the impervious coverage, and, and you know, the lack of recharge, et cetera, it, it's just an overall benefit. You still get approved for those number of spaces, you just don't have to construct them until you actually, so you can still market it that way, it's just, again, who you ultimately have. And that's the problem we face with a lot of these warehouses, because they are spec. But that's the only comment I have. Open it up to the board if they have any questions. Seeing none, I guess we finish with your planner?
Yes.
Should Mr. Penkey testify about the need for the parking, the truck loading spaces? Or is that best done by the planner?
Well, he, he already offered a comment that they're industry standard, and, and the loading berth depth, I was just telling Jim this, I don't recall, there's too many applications we've seen that didn't ask for this variance.
Right.
And I think it's probably incumbent upon us to maybe change the standard, because it's always coming in this way. And, and the testimony that's given is the same, that this is industry standard, and the truck can make the turns and have full movement. So, I don't have any issue with that variance.
John, raise your right hand. Son, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Hi, there, everyone, my name is John McDonough, that's spelled M-C, capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H, business address 101 Gibraltar Drive, over in Parsippany, New Jersey.
Previously approved by this board as an expert in the field of planning?
Multiple times, yes.
Have your credentials changed negatively?
No.
Since then? Thank you.
Accepted.
Mr. McDonough, could you please begin by walking through the planning analysis that you did in connection with this property?
Sure, I think I can be relatively short and on point, because the relief here that the applicant is seeking is relatively short as well. The list of zone conformance is long, we'll, we'll pop through that, but the relief is relatively minor in the context of your zoning ordinance. We'll start first with just the physical integration here, what we always look at from a physical planning standpoint, how the land use before you and the development before you marries up with the particular site. We've put together an exhibit of three slides that simply show that, how the site looked back on May seventeenth from the air. The first, do we need to mark this?
Yes, we would need to mark this into evidence.
Yes.
In control, thank you.
Yes. A5, for the record, are going to be a series of three aerial photographs taken on May seventeenth, so relatively fresh, regarding the subject property condition and the surrounding land use context.
Let's give him A5, six, and seven, please, it's just less.
Gotcha. So, A5 is going to be an aerial drone view of the subject site looking to the north, that's Route 287 to the right-hand side, just to emphasize the proximity to the site. This is a large piece of land, and we've labeled two tax lots. The undeveloped portion, lot closer to 287, is Lot 21.14, which is slightly more than six acres, undeveloped, with a few isolated wetlands, and we do have a wooded buffer, as you heard through Craig's testimony, the portion adjacent to 287 is going to stay intact. So, I think that's a good thing from a planning standpoint, that this will frame and buffer this development from 287. Then we've got the developed portion over at 2106, which is just north of twenty-one acres, and you've heard about that developed five-story, fifty-nine foot tall, approximately three hundred and fifty thousand square foot office building, and the expansive parking lot that we're, we're dealing with as well. Next slide, A6. Just sort of spinning you around here, which is an aerial drone view of the subject site now looking to the south. You've got the four hundred atrium building in the middle, that triangular-shaped building from this particular vantage point. You get a sense of the expanse of surface parking. This site is essentially a blank sheet of paper for the applicant, substantially cleared, flat, ideally suited to accommodate the development that's before you. And it's also, as you heard counsel say at the beginning, is a perfect spot for a logistics distribution facility, as the applicant is proposing here, because it's in the center of this commercialized area, industrial and, and commercial uses abound in this particular area, and we're remote from any residential use. So, again, you highlight the, the openness of the site, given the parking lot, you can see the transforming nature of the site with the hotel coming into play. That's the general area where we're going to be looking for the relief related to those parking, I call them bumpouts, because it's not the entirety of the parking area that is going to be in, in deviation or in variance, but just a few pockets, which we think are a better alternative, that's that C2 argument that we started out with, because they're located closer to the building entrances, and we think it's better to get the relief so we can make these better and higher-quality parking spaces, which will in turn attract higher-quality tenants as well, which is the real, the real end goal here. And then finally, the last frame, we're just going to spin you around looking to the east. Again, you get a sense of the, the triangular nature of the building in the center, I'll say the, I won't, I don't want to use the word sprawling, the expansive nature of the, of the parking lot here. And again, and the openness of the land, ideally suited to accommodate the development that's before the board. In the background, you can see the framed trees, which will provide that buffering from Route 287. I think that's all I had with respect to the A6 and 7. So, in terms of the proposal you've just heard, this is going to demolish the existing structure, which has certainly outlived its useful life, it was a beautiful building, I'm sure, in its time, but with the condition of the property now, which we all know, it has certainly outlived its use for life and is now obsolete. We've got two buildings coming in that are going to form this logistics facility, one that's just north of two hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet, another just north of a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet. You've heard all the statistical information, so I won't go into that. But in terms of the zoning aspect, we're in the business and industry, business and industry district, the use is permitted, you heard about the time of application, we all know the time of application, and, and applicant is entitled to a certain degree of certainty at the time of its application as to what is permitted, and this applicant has abided by that. Other permitted uses that could go here include labs, include self-storage, data centers, offices, hotels, looks similar, even have now cannabis cultivation could go here as well, so there's a variety of newer uses that could go in place. In terms of the zone conformance, we really have a much longer list of conformance as opposed to the relief. In addition to the use conformance, the project is going to substantially conform to all of your bulk controls, the building height, the overall floor area, the mass and scale of the building, the lot coverage, the setbacks on all of the sides comply from a building standpoint, and the parking fully complies. It was a good question about the parking count, you certainly control parking in two ways here in town. Number one is with a minimum requirement, with the applicant meets, and then a maximum requirement with respect to coverage, which the applicant also abides by. So, I would offer that the applicant is within the window of what's allowed from a parking standpoint, in terms of your, your zoning regulations. In terms of the actual relief, you've heard them run down by Craig, not too much here, we've got C-relief for the parking setback in the front yard, it only pertains to those two, I call them bumpouts, those two bays of parking that get within thirty-three feet of the front lot line, where fifty feet would be the minimum required. We'll come back to that in a second. We've also got interrelated relief for the loading dock length, which I know the board has heard many times before, we, we talked about that when we were here for IDI Logistics not too long ago, and it goes towards the planning goal for efficient land use and providing for what adequately meets the needs of a, a turning movement of a vehicle on the site. We've got some design exceptions, I'll come back to them at the very end, but in terms of the C-relief, we really look at the flexible C-balancing test as a better zoning alternative. In terms of the parking setback relief, clearly, the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh any detriments. In terms of the parking justification, the location is a better alternative, as I said, because it keeps the spaces closer to the entryways, you can see that in, in Craig's plan here. Quality parking arrangements are one of the many ways we can attract a quality tenant. The setback is an improvement over the existing condition, which is actually closer and has more parking spaces closer to the front, so an improvement over an existing condition is also a better zoning alternative. And just from a pure planning standpoint, to have a double-loaded parking aisle is more efficient than a single-loaded parking aisle. Where we can achieve that with minimal impact, that's good planning, and we think the applicant has achieved that here by virtue of the landscaping, to give a nice soft edge, to screen those parking spaces, so they will not be there, I'll say, biting at you as you're, you're going by. It pertains to the atrium drive extension, which is effectively a driveway, it's not really a roadway, per se, to the extent that it, it's going to cater to the one industrial building that's coming online immediately behind the subject site. The encroachment, as I said, is mitigated by landscaping, and I talked about the overall parking count not needing any relief, so the fact that we have setback relief does not relate to excessive parking in terms of the, the context of the ordinance and not triggering any other type of relief. All said, with respect to the setback relief, my planning conclusion is the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public or impairment to the zone plan. As far as the loading dock length, again, in the interest of efficient land use, we've got good evidence to demonstrate that those loading berths can accommodate vehicles safely and efficiently, without any negative impacts on the surrounding, on the site itself, and additional larger loading berth is unnecessary and excessive, and in that regard, also meets the C2 test. Finally, with respect to the shortlist of design exceptions.
John, we're not gonna have to hear any testimony about those, just after one question. Will the design waivers in any way create an unsafe condition on the property?
No.
Thank you.
All said, the statutory criteria for relief are met, this is a good application. We have an applicant here that is willing to revitalize a site that is in dire need of help, that's a good thing from a planning standpoint.
Thank you. Any questions of the board for, for the planner?
At this time, the applicant would like to request potentially a five-to-ten-minute break, so that we can discuss some of the items that the board raised in connection with the application.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to, before we do that, Mr. Chairman, do we want to hear from the public, and then might?
Yeah.
That would be fine.
Hear questions from the public?
That, that makes sense, let's, let's, so, so I'll make a motion to open to the public for this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public for any comment on this application?
Alex Strauss, 285 Haslett Way. Former hotel worker, Marriott Holiday Inn, and that's rubble right now. Okay, so, looking at the, the mock-up right here, above building, you might call it Building B, the smaller building, is that the hotel? Is that the Hampton Inn? Okay. So, we're talking about what, forty-three, forty-four feet and above is the building height, and you see the hotel is structured so that rooms are both on the, I guess it would be on the west side and the east side primarily, right? I guess Mr. Stires could also agree with that, but, so the people on that side, the warehouse, they're gonna get a good view of the warehouses, right? You know, how high are the trees gonna be, where are they gonna grow in? And the hotel is, how many stories, the hotel? Five stories.
Use the mic, please.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, can you just repeat what you said, Craig?
I believe it's five stories.
Okay, so, on that side, they're going to definitely see the warehouses, right? I mean, you know, yeah, so we're going downhill aesthetic-wise. Also, the truck area on the larger building, you see, can we keep that? Sorry. It's disappeared. Let me go back in. Okay, thank you. The larger building on the right side, there're gonna be trucks there, and the noise is not going to be blocked, you know, completely, certainly, because there's that through area, okay? You know, I know we wanna worry about aesthetics for Atrium Drive, but maybe it'd be better if, if those trucks were on the other side, I don't know, it's just not, again, not good for the hotel. Hotel guests, are they going to have double-pane windows, probably, you know, solid windows? That is a big concern that I have about the hotel. A lot of concerns about the hotel.
Yeah, but this isn't the hotel application, so.
I understand, but the hotel was there first, it was proposed, it was, been under construction for years, and I know, this is warehouse country, Mayor Kramer wants it to be. Okay, so, going out to Davidson, no, it's true, it's true, warehouse king. Now, going out, Mr. McDonough, or actually, also, sorry, I'm trying to keep the names right, Mr. Penkey also. We've heard comments, of course, about how there used to be a lot of traffic, fifteen-hundred cars, et cetera, but this was never designed specifically for warehouses. So, the fact is, people going out to Davidson Avenue, making that right, how comfortable is that right? They're gonna be crossing over into our incoming traffic a little bit, because it's trucks. We see that all the time in Franklin now. Two-lane roads, they can't make the turns. You know, what, what kind of situation is that going to be? Anybody?
Can we have the traffic engineer? Because I believe that issue has been looked at.
Yes, for the record, that situation was previously looked at by this board with the 50 atrium application. And their plan actually includes a dedication of right-of-way and correction of that corner associated with it. And it's also cross-referenced in CME's report on how to deal with that.
Can you just explain what that means? I mean, I, I believe the answer is that the radius is going to be increased at.
Yes.
Where atrium meets Davidson, so the trucks can make that turn without, and, and let me ask this in the form of a question. Is the new radius at that intersection going to be such that trucks can make the turn without going into the opposing lane of traffic?
Yes, and I believe that shows on the site plan for 50 atrium way.
Okay. And is there also, I thought I saw some mention of some, I don't know if it's your application or another one, some modifications to atrium drive as well? Some of the turns within atrium drive?
With this application, we've agreed to make some adjustments to the curb returns at atrium drive way, yes.
Okay. And basically so that trucks can make those turns within atrium drive itself without going into the opposing lane of traffic?
Correct.
But basically smoothing out some of those curves?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And also, maybe Mr. Penkey or somebody else. The current condition, although it's been mentioned it's a private road atrium drive, but it's also an easement, et cetera. The condition has been rather sorry. The pavement, now we're going to be adding trucks, so I don't know if any, maybe I didn't rewrite, repaving is in order, especially where it still have hotel guests traveling on that road. So repaving drive, because it's going to be hit by tractor-trailers now. Maybe that's, I think that's something that needs to be done as well. So.
Yeah, but there's, if I'm not mistaken, there's also test borings done of, or test, yeah, test borings of atrium drive that yielded, that was submitted to the township and yielded that it was acceptable to truck traffic.
It's acceptable currently.
So the pavement out there now can handle truck traffic.
Okay.
I think it's two different questions. So the, the first question about the borings was, is the construction of the road itself and the subsurface, et cetera, was it built only just to accommodate cars or was it built to accommodate trucks? And I guess the borings were done and the subsurface, the amount of, you could explain what, how a road is built better than I can. But the road itself was built to accommodate the weight of trucks. But I think his question is more than the surface.
His question is on the quality of the road.
Thank you.
I mean, we are reconstructing everything. You can see that we're repaving all the way up to almost the frontage of the hotel itself.
He's wondering why you don't go the entire length, considering that you're going to impact the entire length with the new truck traffic.
Well, it, it, I mean, the condition of it, I guess it really depends on ultimately the, the condition of it once the construction is done. I mean, if it needs an overlay, then we can overlay it on, you know, the limits of the property.
The perception right now is that the condition is bad, particularly for, you know, vehicles occupied by non-truck traffic drivers. So the question is still there, will you repave it as part of this development?
I just wanted to bring out as well, correct, atrium drive is a private road and it's maintained by multiple easement holders of the owners of property all along it, which have shared maintenance responsibilities. So it's a subject of that private agreement between all of those parties. So that would, that would control in terms of, you know, if there's any potential impact. So where there are improvements being proposed by the applicant, those portions of the roadway as well as the frontage of our site, and as Mr. Stires indicated up to the hotel, those areas are all being repaved.
So just to clarify, Jim, are you saying that he cannot request that you all take a look at the condition of the roadway, whether, however you, the groups come together and have it repaved, given that you're going to impact the entire roadway? His question hasn't been answered. We understand the arrangement that's there, but that doesn't negate the ability to repay the project. I don't think he wants to leave the decision up to you. He's saying that the quality is bad currently. So what's going to be the reaction to it? You can discuss that during your 10-minute break.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think part, part of that answer may be that this is not the only application on atrium. There are other, other applications. So I would think that there should be some type of cost-sharing responsibility amongst the different applications to properly, to the degree of atrium drive needs to be fixed up, it needs to be fixed up. And it should be a portion between those different developments.
Which is a different discussion regarding the timing of when it happens. How it's paid for is different than when it happens, the timing and when it happens. This is a substantial development.
Yeah.
Correct, but there are other ones as well along atrium drive that are impacting and will impact this area.
Okay.
But let's, I guess, I think you made the suggestion, let them talk about it, and then if you're not satisfied, we can talk about if there needs to be a condition of this approval and what that wording could be.
Does that accurately reflect your position, sir? That's what you were stating? All right.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else you have?
Only, just.
Don't forget, Sixth Avenue Warehouse. Old Garden State Exhibit Center. Approved as a, as a warehouse.
Oh, there are, what was used, what used to be the Garden State Exhibit Center, they are, they have an approved warehouse as part of their site. And I believe there are some improvements involved to atrium drive from Davidson Avenue to the end of that property, which brings it almost to the hotel we're talking about. So the whole section is incumbent really upon you people to look at it together, because you're the ones that have the easement for the, for the street.
So, so let me ask Jim to weigh in on this, because, yeah, it should, it should save us some time.
Let me start by saying that the necessary nexus between this application and the suggestion or request as a condition that the roadway be improved, the necessary nexus is present, all right, in my opinion, for the entirety of atrium drive. I recognize that you have an easement situation where you have multiple responsible parties. My suggestion would be twofold. Number one, that a certain amount of money be placed into escrow. Perhaps you should be talking to the other stakeholders involved in the easement, all right? And as Charles pointed out, that's only one part of the question. The other part is, we need a timeframe within which it'll, the work will be performed. So I hate to say that we can't finish and vote tonight, but I, I think you need to go back and figure out how you're going to solve the problem.
At this point, we would like to take a break, discuss this. We are absolutely here to try and resolve everything this evening so that we can walk away with a decision from this board. It has been multiple months that we've been trying to get on to be heard in connection with this application. So we will do and try to do what's in our power to resolve this issue.
I recognize, I recognize that.
We'll, we'll give you your 10 minutes. Let's just finish the public, because we've taken a lot of your time, so.
Thank you. One last thing, just getting back to the hotel. We've heard in another application, of course, here in town, about noise. And you know what happens at night, and this is a 24-hour operation? It could, it could be. Okay.
Well, the board does have the power to restrict hours of operation, so. So I've been told.
Okay, thank you. I stayed in a hotel, real quick, I stayed in a hotel in San Diego, right on the interstate, Mission Valley. All night, traffic going. Didn't really bother me, because it's almost like, I guess you call it white noise, sort of, you know, right? To me, that's different from what you're going to get close up warehouse, you know? And you know what happens at night, there's like an inversion, right? And it's different, you hear it. So again, I'm very concerned about the hotel, actually both hotels, Hampton Inn in particular, but also the Doubletree potentially as well. So, yeah. Any noise, more noise dampening measures or anything? Anything? And you have to have the trucks on the right-hand side of the larger building. That absolutely has to happening.
I just have one question. He had mentioned that he was a previous hotel worker. Do you have any ownership interest in either one of the hotels in connection with this site?
I wish, but no.
And is there any representative from the, from either hotel here this evening to speak specifically about impacts to those properties? I don't believe that there is.
There is none.
Yeah. But I understand what you're saying, and I sympathize with the hotel workers, though. At the front desk is going to get, might get some people coming down or calling down. That's what happens, so I'm very concerned. That's all.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're not done yet.
Jan Bryant, 22 Bryant Court, no interest in hotels. But I want to commend you guys that you're redoing this, this area that's been vacant and all. I just have some, some questions about it. With this private driveway and all, it was making me think that, you know, there's nothing else, but there's two hotels, is that? And is there a church still there? No? Okay, all righty. Okay, so just two hotels. Are both hotels built already?
The Hampton Inn is still under construction.
Okay. And, you know, when looking over your environmental impact statement, you know, you talk about that traffic impacts and how there's going to be, you know, less traffic and all. And I guess a concern that I have, and I don't, I think you guys mentioned you have the tra, the traffic engineer, even though there's less traffic compared to the 1,540 parking spaces and all, it's like different kind of traffic. It's these truck traffic. So has the traffic engineer, I guess, looked at, is the hotel traffic and the warehouse traffic going to intersect at any point or anywhere? You know, are they going to be driving down the same road? Like with the people who are going to the hotel and that are going to the warehouse?
Yes, the, the driveway for the Doubletree is in this location right here. And there's two driveways for the Hampton Inn, which are in these two locations. So they would both use atrium drive as well.
And, and did you say the hotels are there already?
Obviously, the Doubletree has been there since the 80s.
Okay.
And the Hampton Inn has been under construction for about six years now.
Okay, for how long?
About six years.
Okay. And, wow, so, so has the traffic engineer, I guess, put that into consideration that there's going to be hotel traffic and? And truck traffic?
Yes, certainly. The, the roads are used by all vehicles that are common to the area and the regional roadway. So it's, it's typical that different vehicles mix on the roadways, and the roadways are designed to handle that.
Okay.
Do you have a future build, Carl? Do you have a future build factor?
No, we didn't do a specific analysis in this case because of the substantial reduction in traffic. We've been showing improvement. So we haven't done a detailed traffic impact analysis because we know it's a reduction. But in terms of the use of the roads and the driveways, we're all permitted to use the roads, and so are commercial vehicles. We share that every day on the roads. They're for that purpose.
Thank you. And how many, I guess according to my calculations, I saw there were 61 truck bays, is that correct? Oh, for the one building, okay.
61 for the one building, that's Building A, and 32 for the other.
61 truck bays in one, and 32 in the other, 93. And then there were certain, like, trailer spots for trucks?
I don't have that.
Oh.
Yeah, there's, there's 17 trailer parking spots on the norally side of the larger building.
17 trailer parking spots. Is that for them to, you know, for the truckers to relax in, or is that for long-term stay?
Just the trailers.
Just the trailer.
So it's not expected that detractors would be attached, it's just a trailer storage.
Just a trailer storage, okay. And which building is that in?
It's on the norally side of the larger building.
So 93 truck bays. What type of warehouse is this going to be?
It's, we don't have a specific tenant at this point.
Okay. How tall is the warehouse going to be?
47 feet.
Oh, okay. I thought I read somewhere 59.
No.
No, 47 feet, okay. Yeah, that's, that's, okay. So in your impact, and again, I, I really commend that this is going to be redone, but I'm just concerned about some other factors. So sorry, I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time. Health, safety, and well-being of the public. I noticed that as far as with air quality, you guys say, well, there will be no, will be a change in the type of vehicles entering, exiting the site. The number of overall vehicles will be drastically reduced. So with, with the trucks that are coming in to these 89 or what it was in 91, 93 truck bays, are they going to be diesel engine fuel?
Jan, we're kind of getting off the, off the, you know, preview of what we can, what we can do here.
Okay. Well, so for the air quali, I mean, really, what they're saying, they're saying there's not going to be any difference in the air quality, but how do they know that?
For their site, they're probably basing it on the fact that there's a huge amount of parking and traffic reduction, like they already testified. But I mean, you brought this up multiple times in almost every warehouse application we hear, and the answer is, we would have to do a township-wide or regional air quality.
So, so just for your information, the mayor of the township has been giving the blue air monitors to different facilities around the township to hang outside in order to get readings of what's going on, you know, presently, and, you know, and as we, you know, build the 7 million square feet in warehouses that are proposed. So there are things that the township has been, did you guys know about that? About the, the, these monitors that they're giving out?
No.
Ted, Dr. Chase knows.
I, I'm focused on what, what you would want this applicant to do, and I'm not, not here to.
Okay, well, so am I allowed to make suggestions? Is that? I mean, maybe that they could, you know, do one of these blue air monitors. I mean, I'm, you know, like I said, I commend them for what they're doing, but I'm also concerned about, we've got two hotels coming by. You know, we could have a hotel that they're having a kids' conference with all, the whole soccer team is there, and they're outside playing around. So I'm really concerned about the, the health and safety of the public. And if they're saying that there's not going to be any difference in air quality, and they really don't know that, how can they say that? I mean, that just doesn't seem like that's a fair statement in a, you know, impact.
That may essentially be true. However, until there's an actual measurement taken, which they can't take because they don't have a tenant and it's not built yet, they can base it on what they believe factually to be the future state, which I'm, I'm sure they've done. So if you want to ask them how they determine, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
But the editorializing and the, and the scenarios of soccer teams, don't go, don't go there, because we can make up any scenario we want.
Right. So would you all put up an air quality monitor to have at your warehouses to get readings similar to the air monitors that the mayor has been giving out to different facilities so that you can measure the air quality and make sure that it's within range?
Ben, do you want to address that from a legal perspective? But to, because to my knowledge, there's never been an application that a court upheld a denial based upon air quality. Microphone, please.
That's correct, and further, I just wanted to add for the record, the environmental impact report specifically addressed this, and our prior traffic testimony confirmed that we're eliminating fifteen hundred parking spaces that were devoted to the prior office use of this building, so fifteen hundred cars were coming in and out of the site on a daily basis. The parking, when you combine the car and truck traffic here, is one-fifth of that, so when you evaluate that, even on a practical level, that's what we're dealing with, so ultimately, that went into the findings that set forth in our environmental report, to, to require analysis beyond that, when there's no factual data or evidence to the contrary, and the township doesn't have specific standards in place in order to enforce it, is unreasonable and outside the scope of the, of the purview of this board.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, it can't, it can't be done because you don't have data. So yeah, let's, let's just move on.
Okay, thank you. And so health, safety, and well-being of the public, in the statement, it says, "All proposed improvements to this site will be constructed and permitted in accordance with all local, state, and federal requirements." And I always thought that when, in these environmental impact statements, what they're referring to is the health, safety, and well-being of the public, not necessarily when you're building it, so there really is, you haven't addressed that issue. So.
Yeah.
As far as.
Yeah, let's, we're not gonna go there either, just because.
No, no, I'm not, I'm done with that question, I'm just, yeah.
Well, we keep going, health, safety, welfare, EIS, I'm trying to get to what you're gonna ask about this.
Yeah, no, no, I just, I have my list here.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we need to hear the whole list.
All right.
I mean, I've been gracious not to put a time limit, but you're testing it.
Okay. Thank you. As far as the, it looks like, did you all use the, for the store, is your engineer here for the stormwater? Did you all use the, the new regulations?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jan, did you listen to the testimony? I'm just asking, did you, did you listen to the entire hearing, or did you come late?
No, I was here on time.
Okay, so, so did you, did you hear them say that they're keeping existing basins, they're going to be covering fifty-five percent, and the new basins are going to be under the green? I mean, that's the answer.
Okay, I, and that's what I read in the report, and I just wanted to confirm, and I want to commend you that you're using the most recent statements from the New Jersey Inland Flood Protection.
No.
No? Oh, okay.
We were grandfathered to the rules that were in place March second, twenty-twenty-one, not as of July seventeen.
Okay, so, and.
But it's still an improvement over the old basins.
Absolutely.
Right, and has there, has that site been known to have any flooding on it? Previous to, like when it was a hotel, when it was the business office buildings?
No, not that I know of.
Okay, so it was one, the basins kept everything pretty much in order that was there existing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I think I had one more, thank you for bearing with me, and again, it's in reference to the, what I couldn't find in your report about what you said about noise. You, did you guys evaluate what the, what did you say in your environmental impact statement about noise? Anything? I didn't see it addressed.
I don't recall, I don't, yeah, it's basically gotta comply with the state regulations, which is sixty-five decibels at the property line.
Okay, and it's in the report, I must've just missed it?
I'm not sure if it's specifically in the report, but it's a state law that we need to comply with.
Okay, I know it's required in the statement, so just letting you know, thank you very much, and thank you for redoing that area, sorry to give you.
And for the record, it's fifty decibels in the evening.
In the evening, correct.
And our question for.
Okay, no, 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 no questions, let's just finish with the public and close it if we can, so we can give them their ten-minute break, during that ten-minute break, the board doesn't go anywhere, we're gonna handle the discussion item, and then we'll come back and ask questions, if, based on what you're gonna go, I wanna give you your ten minutes, because at ten o'clock, this is done, so if there's no more public, I'll make a motion to close the public. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Nine thirty-five. Mark, do our discussion item, please.
Okay, so Christine had sent everybody, emailed everybody, a brief description that I did of a few, what I consider to be almost kind of editorial changes to the zoning map, the first one is Supercourt, I forget the name of the neighborhood, but it's the neighborhood with Gold Star, Rydell, Winding Way, Colts Run Road, so.
Princeton Highlands.
There you go, in the late nineties, that was zoned R-ten A, I believe it has some cluster provisions in it where they, yeah, some of the homes built on smaller lots, and then there was open space created, and then it seems that subsequent to that approval, Supercourt was built as kind of a cul-de-sac road extending from that neighborhood, and it got approved by a use variance to the zoning board, and it, the, the plans have that, that it was built per the R-ten A zone, and that was the approval, and that's how that neighborhood on Supercourt was built, under the R-ten A. So in terms of the lot sizes and the home sizes and the setbacks and the coverages, all of that is following R-ten A, but when you go to our zoning map, because it was done by a use variance, the zoning map was never changed, so it's still technically in the RR-three zone, so that causes a few problems for staff sometimes, when staff looks at the zoning map and goes, oh, it's RR-three, so technically, if people don't know the history from back in nineteen ninety-nine, they think that the, we've also had inquiries from people getting either home sales, refinancing, is the home compliant, they look at the zoning map, it's RR-three, these are not three-acre lots, so the proposal is to put that street into the RR-threes, I mean, I mean, the R-ten A zone, again, consistent with the neighborhood that it's attached to, consistent with the way that those twenty or so homes were built. So that's Supercourt, any questions?
No, not for me.
I'd just like to add, how this happened, that area was originally supposed to be open space for the development, and then the developer got the land on the other side of Simonson's Brook, where there are now athletic fields, so that became the open space, and that's why then Supercourt, the open space designation was no longer necessary, so it then got developed, as you say, I'd forgotten that it was by use variance, but the compelling reason was that it was no longer needed as open space.
So, and, and the last thing I'll note is that because that street has already been subdivided and built, this does not create any additional development potential whatsoever, because again, that's how that street was subdivided and developed. The other issue, I think, I'd say is also very similar, there are three areas that are, and I was gonna bring up my, I got my computer, because I was gonna show it, because it's a little easier to describe it with a map, but there's a number of residentially developed areas that are just outside of the redevelopment area that goes from along Somerset Street or Route twenty-seven, and I think, and they're in the general business zone, so these homes are actually non-conforming. What I think happened is, I think there was a long area of general business zoning going down Route twenty-seven, and then when the township in the nineties redid, applied the redevelopment zoning, they didn't change, they basically left these islands of GB, general business, off of twenty-seven, and essentially attached to, and, you know, in the middle of, they're almost kind of like islands of GB off of Route twenty-seven, from a zoning perspective, they make no sense, I can't imagine that the township or the neighbors would want these, these certain properties developed commercially, I think they'd be probably less than ideal commercial uses, because they're in less than ideal locations from a commercial perspective, and again, the predominant, there's a few dozen homes, so this has been addressed in the two thousand and six master plan, or maybe it was two thousand and twelve, two different master plan documents have recommended this, it was rela, that it be changed to R-seven, because that is the zoning of the neighborhood that these areas connect to, and frankly, how most of this area is already developed again with residential uses. Yeah, I think it was a relatively low priority issue, so it just kind of never got done. There's, I'll quickly describe the three areas, the one is on Matilda, that one's currently developed with a church, churches are permitted use in the R-seven zone, so effectively, nothing would change with regard to that property. There are a number of homes on Henry Street, again, it's, it's five homes consecutively right next to each other, already built up, just no reason for them to be in the GB zone, they're several, a few hundred feet off of Route twenty-seven in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The one area that, or the one block, really, the only area where additional development potential could be realized is Block one sixty-five, there are, this is the neighborhood that, or the block that is bound by Juliette, Marshall, Myrtle, and I believe it's Henry, but nonetheless, it's Myrtle to the north, Marshall to the south, and Juliette's on the west.
So, Mark, just as mindful of the fact that we have three minutes left before I'm gonna reconvene this for the application, I mean, this sounds pretty straightforward, what do you need from us, just a recommendation?
So, I do, I did just wanna point out, though, that I wanna make it clear that, you know, this one block, there could be an additional seven homes, because there are three homes on that block, and then there's a few properties that are just undeveloped, so I just wanted to make it clear.
Right.
That with regard to that one block, that they're all, so really, all this is doing, what I'm doing now is typically, when we do zoning changes, we usually refer that to the planning board. I've been requested by council to, or the land use committee, to prepare an ordinance, I'm making you aware, council's going to introduce the ordinance, it's gonna come back to you for your formal review, for consistency with the master plan, but this is just our kind of normal course of action that we, usually, things flow from the planning board, zoning changes, I'm making you aware now, to see if you have any concerns before the ordinance is prepared and introduced by council.
No, I mean, it, it seems like it's gonna, it's, in Supercourt's cases, consistent with the existing use, so that it's not gonna affect anything in the future in, in terms of additional building, I guess, and then, you know, for the, you know, I remember we've done this in the past on Route twenty-seven, where there have been other sort of little spots where the zoning doesn't make sense, and we've changed it. If this zone GB, and you think it'll never be developed that way, and likely shouldn't be developed that way, to make it consistent making an R-seven, that, that makes, that makes sense too, because it's consistent with the houses that are there.
Yes, and it's, and when you look at the zoning map, it's attached to the larger R-seven neighborhood that exists in that area of town.
So, so being that this will come back to us anyway, we will make a formal determination that it's consistent with the master plan, can we agree that Mark should refer this to the council, and again, it'll come back.
Yes.
But we won't even have an action or anything.
No, there's really no action for the board at this time, this is.
Just that we.
Wanted to see if there was any positive head nods or.
Yeah.
Any comments, and then.
If there are any comments, just maybe email Mark if you think of something between now and whenever it would get referred, it's gotta get introduced, right, then referred, then.
Yes.
So it's gonna be a little bit, so if you think of anything, just let Mark know.
Thank you.
So now we've taken care of that.
Perfect timing, look at that.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay, so we had discussed three specific items, the land banking, the paving, and the sidewalks, that were raised in connection with the, the board comments and the public discussion, and Mr. Stires is going to discuss with the plan, what the applicant is proposing in connection with resolving those three issues.
Great. So as far as the land banking, the applicant would propose to bank this, I guess, bay of parking, as well as the one back in this location, and that would be approximately thirty-two parking spots. As far as.
If I can interject.
Yes.
I think the board is leaning towards a hundred and five. The difference between what you have and what the ordinance requires.
That's what I would consider banks, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you why I'm dying on this hill. The ordinance requires a hundred and fifty-four spaces, you're proposing two hundred and fifty-nine, you cannot give me testimony tonight that you have a client that requires that, if you did, we wouldn't be having this conversation, because you'd be able to social proof. You'll get the two hundred and fifty-nine approved, if this application were to be approved, but you will only construct a hundred and fifty-four and bank the rest pending a tenant.
So if the tenant comes back that they need them, we just essentially build it?
Yeah. But since you don't have a tenant, let's wait to see if the tenant needs it, I hate to pave things over without a reason.
And in my experience, between the time a lease is inked and the time that they wanna occupy, there's certainly a substantial amount of time within which the parking can be constructed, obviously, weather conditions allowing.
Yeah, and it's up to you, which spaces, I mean, you don't need to go through it tonight, you don't need to have another ten-minute conference, I don't care, it's a hundred and fifty-four spaces that will allow you to construct now with the remaining hundred and five banked, and when you have a tenant that says we need fifty of them, or we need, or the tenant changes in the future, the approval carries, right, you'll, you'll have the ability to construct the two fifty-nine. Fair enough?
That is acceptable.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so what's your next?
That's number one.
That's number one.
Number two, the question about the paving, we would offer that they would pave everything with, overlay everything within their property, so that's essentially this area right here. So that would kind of be their fair share of, of the development, like you said, you have fifty atriums, I believe is doing their part, there's another application to the south that's coming in, I believe in October, most likely, you would probably put the same condition on them, then you also have Puleo coming in next month, so.
How are you computing fair share? What mathematical formula did you use to derive it, that fair share, given, given the impact that you're gonna have on a traffic standpoint?
It's a private road.
Understood.
It is under what I consider a homeowner's, although it's a business, is in a, in association agreement as far as maintenance, it's also, like I said, it's a private road, it's not a town road, so they, essentially, what the, the agreement says is that you pay your fair share, that's what's in place already, so.
But the easement document doesn't indicate how you compute fair share.
I don't know it verbatim.
Yeah, I think the board, the board would rather see a global solution, all right, for the entirety of Atrium Drive.
There's a book in the middle, at the very top of your slide, near that upper detention basin, and then, of course, yeah, now you can see the whole thing, that nobody is coming in with an application, because the building on, the big white building on the left there, I think, is not changing, and of course, the Doubletree is not changing, so that wouldn't get paved, repaved, just by all of the applicants paving their part, so that, that's the one concern I would have, but obviously, we can't commit everybody else to chip in on that section tonight.
But I mean, the other question is, other than the person from the public that said the road is not. the road is not in a good condition, your professionals have not said that. I mean.
I'm on the board, I'm also a resident, and I feel the same way as the public.
Let's not forget the board's knowledge of local conditions, always given substantial weight.
Okay.
I was about to make a similar type comment like that. I think what's important is, there needs to be an understanding of what's gonna be done, when it needs to be done. I think we need to have, to get too involved tonight, we don't have an assessment that that street needs to be done. This, Atrium Drive runs all the way past this property to Pierce Street. And we're talking about requiring it, we're talking about, in terms of this application, repaving the entire street. I drive that occasionally. I don't notice it being, at this point, any better or any worse than a dozen other streets. I think for the long term, we need to have them establish exactly, or us also, what is going to happen and who's gonna decide when it needs to happen. What else? We can't do anything else tonight, as far as that part goes. They have an associate, lose association, so there's a means and, already established that might pay for it, but who decides when it needs it and how much it needs?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not an engineer. I'm not gonna, you know, sit here and try to think I can determine pavement, but just on the basis of what Jim said. I mean, I have no issue with, with the future application paving their portion of the road. Absolutely. That said, what Jim said about a general impact, I mean, there are only one, there is only one way to get the trucks that will occupy a hundred and sixty-one on one building and what, thirty-two, and I forget. Lot of bays. There's only one way in and one way out, and that's Atrium Drive, which is great because it gets you right to Davidson and right to two eighty-seven, but it is going to get a lot of use.
But, but there, there is, it's not one way in or one way out. There is a full intersection with Pierce Street.
Yeah, but I mean, let's face it, I mean, most trucks are gonna go to two eighty-seven. It's not gonna be.
I understand that, but there can also be a sizable number of trucks coming off from exit twelve, Randolph to Elizabeth, or Randolph to Pierce, and coming that way. I just want to see that there is a solution in place and someone who will make the decision. Who makes the decision when the work is to be done?
All right, I, I've come up with a solution. I take your point that we, we are not sitting up here as pavement engineers. I'm certainly not. We don't know what the condition of the road is. You testified that it can handle trucks as it's presently constructed. We have some people who think differently. I'm not going to try to split the difference. Would it be acceptable that we make a condition that the township engineer evaluate the road? And if they determine that it needs to be repaved to accommodate your use, then you'll do it.
Mr. Chairman, let me.
I'm.
Mr. Chairman, let me just, maybe make a slight adjustment to that, because this, this is not the last application you're gonna say.
Right.
So you're gonna get another bite at the apple here as far as this issue. There are others who will be adding truck traffic to this road.
Exactly.
So I'm thinking.
And they should also contribute their fair share, isn't it?
Yeah. So Jim, what I'm thinking, maybe if the board, maybe some type of condition along the lines that the applicant needs to confer with the other applicants on, on that site with township staff, and to come up with some plan, some program for the equitable distribution of cost, to make whatever improvements happen to be necessary as determined by the township engineer. And then whatever, and I will, you know, make the board aware of, you know, I think the township, obviously, the township staff need to be in whatever meetings occur, and then we will make the board aware as those meetings occur and if there's agreements that are, that come to fruition. And then when these other subsequent applications come, it's also gonna come up during those meetings as well. So you're gonna get other bites at the apple here from this issue.
Yeah, and, and the way to maybe prevent it from coming up is to take your suggestion, Mark, which I think is really good. Let's get a, a, a look at all of Atrium Drive. There's, there's, as you said, Craig, there's going to be other uses contributing. I'm sensitive to that. It shouldn't be all on you if they're gonna contribute truck traffic as well. I assume there are warehouses that you're referring to?
Yeah.
Because I mean, I'm not gonna make a hotel do it, right?
They both have pretty good engineers, too.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can be consistent, but yeah, and Mark is exactly right. You need to take, we need to take a broader look than just this application. So for now, your site, in front of it, all of it, and the suggested addition that you just noted, the additional, we'll, we'll make a condition, but we'll also make a condition that we'll globally evaluate it, and the board should remember this conversation so the other applications get held to the same standard.
I have one question. Was, did fifty atrium have any type of condition about this particular subject?
I, I, I'm pretty sure fifty atrium, that was the site, I believe their obligation was, they did some improvement to their frontage, and I think they also, that was the radius that we discussed.
Right.
So again, so that trucks can turn onto Davidson.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry. That would be part of the analysis for an equitable distribution of costs.
Well, that's why.
And I think all of, all of this is gonna end up in a developer's agreement.
Exactly, and then that would also be, part of that discussion would be the existing joint maintenance agreement and other agreements which control in terms of that cost sharing as it relates to specific portions of the roadway that are owned by those individual property owners. So that would be the only thing we would add to the condition, that it would be reflective of what's set forth in those agreements as well, but we absolutely agree in terms of all the portions that were previously agreed to in connection with our site that were discussed tonight, as well as the cooperation and, and meeting with staff and based on the determination of the township engineer.
Well, the condition would be the execution of a developer's agreement mutually satisfactory to the applicant and the professional staff. The other parties are not privy to. I know, it's just, there was a delay in, they're not privy to these proceedings, they're not parties to these proceedings. I'm, I'm gonna leave that interaction to your client to deal with the other stakeholders that are parties to that easement agreement. I think they're all gonna have to step up in some way, shape, or form.
How about sidewalks? Yep, that's number three.
Yeah, before sidewalks, I just want to put on the record, I think it's pretty appalling that we're having a conversation about incre, in, increasing the quality, the comfort, and the overall safety, as well as the aesthetics of a roadway that is essentially the gateway into your property. You stated consistently how important it is to have certain design standards, so that you would get a tenant that is congruent with your expectations, yet the most important part, this spine leading into your roadway, that we're having that amount of pushback on it. And now we're about to talk about a sidewalk, which is about the pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, and the safety of your workers and their health in that area. I think it's appalling, alongside with the fact that someone from the public mentioned air quality, which we don't have to repeat, but the testimony being that you have a reduction in vehicles, truck traffic, and a great work pollution banned those vehicles. And so, come on, this is the gateway into your property. We're simply saying, we pave it to make it better for the township overall. That matters to us because we live here.
The applicant is one hundred percent willing to, to repave the entire area within all of its property limits and agreed specifically to work with the township, to the extent that the township engineer.
Got it.
Who is properly skilled and qualified to determine the condition of the roadway as to what he feels is appropriate, that we agree to, to do that work and to do what work is necessary. It's just that there are multiple property owners who will, as we testified, to impact this roadway. So to impose that obligation on one developer specifically, when there is a cumulative effect, is, is unduly burdensome, burdensome on the applicant.
I, I agree.
And it's not that we're not willing to do that, and of course, we want to make our city attractive.
Your cumulative is, is much larger, but in terms of the, the township engineer, I don't know if we can ask for this or not, but I would love to see justification for the determination, because moving forward, if the public comes forward and say, hey, the quality's bad, and we always lean towards the engineer, I'd just like to see on record what the justification was.
Yeah, that's, what I would envision happening is that somebody who's skilled in the art is gonna go out there and say, you know, this road needs to be improved to X to handle all of this traffic. Now, granted, all of the traffic is not coming solely from you, which, a fact that I am sensitive to. So, I, I think we have a good solution, I think we have as good a solution as we're gonna get tonight. Can we get to the sidewalks, please?
As far as the sidewalks, the, the one thing is that if we put the, say, for example, I'm sure, Mr. Brown, you're probably talking about sidewalk in this location here, which is out in front of the basins, you're probably adding another almost quarter acre of impervious coverage.
I care more about the people, so I.
So you're willing to grant the variance?
I'm willing to ensure the safety of the people, to be able to walk and be healthy in that area. That's important to me, but there are other things to consider. I'm not the only person here.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, is will the sidewalks create an impervious coverage variance?
Roughly speaking, I'm.
Yes and no, because if you don't do the parking, right, you've got some room there.
But we still have the variance for the parking, or I mean, the, the approval for the parking.
Right.
Regardless, you have, we're point three-two under the maximum coverage. The other thing is that, that, when we were talking about this, it's, I understand the exercise thing, and, but the thing is, most of the employees will not be out there walking. The other thing is, you're, you're walking around the basin, we're not gonna fence the basin, it's not fenced now. You also could be encouraging people off-site to walk on your sidewalk, which is a liability. So that's a few of the things that they would prefer not to. The biggest one is the impervious coverage.
Also adjacent to two hotels, Rutgers School of Public Health, people walk in the area.
And the other five applications, based on Mark's review letter, were also granted waivers for sidewalks.
That's unfortunate, but you're here today. The hotel has a sidewalk, correct?
Yep.
It's adjacent to your property, right?
Which we connected to.
Yes, we're just simply asking that you extend it along the length of your property. I'm dying on that hill. It's up to the board to determine where they want to go, but.
We could have a provision sort of impervious pavement for the sidewalk.
Well, the, the issue right now, actually, the sidewalk for the hotel is, we're on the bend right here. We did agree to put sidewalk along the frontage, and we've come in where we're hitting two of the trees. So based on the approval, we have to remove two trees to put the rest of the sidewalk in.
I'm just wondering whether there's enough of an interior connection that people could use. You did mention that there's an interior connection, I think, between.
Between the buildings.
Between the buildings?
That's correct.
I mean, would that serve the purpose? I mean, I, I totally respect what Charles is saying. I'll just give my take on it. Compared to other warehouses, say, on Schoolhouse or Cotton Tail, where you could logically walk to a commercial, for example, in the corner of Randolph and Schoolhouse, or the corner of Elizabeth and, and this site doesn't offer you a lot of that opportunity. That being said, I totally understand what Charles is saying about, you know, it's not an office park anymore where people may take their lunch hour and kind of walk around en masse. That said, there, there would still maybe be people who would take that opportunity. So I, I do want to be respectful of what Charles is saying. I'm not as swayed for sidewalks here. I can see them in front of the hotel, if the hotel people, for some reason, would want to get into a warehouse site, let's just say they're maybe visiting or staying there, or they're, I don't know what, how the use will break down, and they may need to go there, there is an interior connection. I don't know where else they'd go, because you're either gonna come to work at that warehouse, or you're, you know, you're not, where the hotels are, you're not very, unfortunately, very pedestrian friendly to any other use you'd want to be at.
Correct, and I think that that's why the applicant, because we certainly appreciate the comments and, and, you know, want to do our best to, to try and accommodate this. I think what we're struggling with is that this is an industrial site. You know, this site was specifically selected and secured because of the fact that it's within an existing industrial area and surrounded by other industrial properties. The intention is for it to be operated for that industrial use. Unlike the hotel property, which is there for public accommodation, which is there to invite the public in to stay and which we're connecting to, this is a private industrial property which is intended to be operated solely for that purpose. And so the concern is by, oh, go ahead. All right, and we have another solution.
All right, so you have, this building is eight hundred feet long. You have an interconnect to this building, which is roughly six hundred feet long. You also have these three basins back here with berms along the top. So you have an interconnect, and then you can have a natural walking path in and amongst those basins. Would that be an acceptable compromise? Because even walking amongst these basins would probably be safer than walking around the wet basins.
For the record, I think you should be doing both. So for me, no.
Let, let me clarify one thing.
I, I just wanna, but I just want to be clear. So when we think about people walking, we do have at the intersection of, what's the street there? Where I go eat all the time, the, what's the, what's the corner here?
Pierce.
Pierce, and what's the other road?
World's Fair.
World's Fair. It's within walking distance from your site. We do want to encourage people to all of our retail and other locations because it's good for business for the township, right? It, it helps to create the vibrancy that we're looking for. And for you to design a site that's essentially an out-of-township, from a pedestrian movement standpoint, to me, just doesn't cut it. That's my opinion.
Where your employees will probably walk through the back of the building and World's Fair Drive to quick check. And that's, that's not only, that's a very doable one. They may go to Pierce Street, but that's relatively far. I don't know that you can arrange any kind of a connection there, but.
Let me, I, I think what it boils down to, first of all, since Craig mentioned my memo, what on subsequent, on, on, other applications are gonna be before this board in the future, frankly, I had identified the issue of sidewalks, because there are a number of developments in close proximity to each other in this area. This report, this, this application was kind of much earlier, so I didn't identify, see that issue. In my other reports, I basically map out the other developments and basically say, the board should discuss whether you want to include sidewalks on these developments or not. I did note, just because it's factual, that the one application, maybe it was IDIL, the board didn't require it in that situation. But again, now there's gonna be some others in that area. So that, that was the context of my, of my comment on these other applications. I think what it boils down to is, I think it's relatively simple. Atrium, Atrium is being kind of repurposed. Does the board think that Atrium Drive, if you assume that even all of Atrium Drive is gonna be redesigned, but a good portion of it will be, do you want to have sidewalks along Atrium Drive or not? I think it's as simple as that.
Aren't there applications potentially pending for facilities toward the other end of Atrium? Is this another abandoned, basically abandoned office building?
I think there's one, I think one of them is right to the left.
Okay.
I think that, that site right there is an application.
Now, this may not be kosher in terms of this application, but you keep mentioning Puleo, which is one that's coming up in back of you. They're moving here from South Plainfield. They make Christmas trees and distribute them. They're known for having warehouse sales.
Okay.
Now, is that a use down the road that we're gonna have here? Maybe we do need sidewalks.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that might be something we discuss in the future, but we need to decide tonight whether this applicant is, because when we put this to a vote, we're gonna finish. we're going to finish this. So Jim, do you want to make a comment on that?
One, Craig, if we do the compromise, would you need a coverage variance?
I think you do need to start sidewalks on Atrium Drive.
Depends on where it's located. So if it's in the, if it's in the easement, no.
Okay.
Well, yeah, are you talking about the path?
Thinking about the compromise that you were suggesting.
No, that would be walking along the berm. So you have, we have currently sidewalks proposed along both front, front of both buildings. And then that would transition on the right-hand side of the photo into a natural walking path that you could walk along the top of the basins, which is 10 feet wide, and then you can kind of, it's more of a natural walking path as opposed to a paved walking path. So no, we would not need an impervious coverage if that were the compromise.
Okay. I hate to put you on the spot, but we're going to start tonight left and I need your opinion. Compromise, as they suggested, or sidewalks on Atrium?
Before we go back, I had one other thing. My major concern is that historically, and frankly, we've set a precedent, and now we're stuck with it, where people come before us and say, look at the entire area, there are no sidewalks. That's the old way we did business. Now we want more walkable, bikeable, healthier communities, including warehouse sites. And if we don't do it now, it's hard to go back and do it later.
Let me add to that, the old saying that each application is judged on its own merits. So you're not bound by what you did or did not do in the past, and I think that there is some validity, I'll leave you to weigh it, that this whole area is being repurposed.
Thank you. Jennifer.
So, before we do that question, sorry, it's been in my head for a while.
Yeah, just let me get quick, because we have all the time.
I know, I know that. And if we don't decide on the vote today, you can answer it whenever the next hearing is. So I have a little bit of a concern, and I'm trying to understand why the driveway of the trucks cannot be in between the two ponds. Why did you change it to the other side of Atrium? Because let's say a truck comes in from Pierce, right? I mean, the ideal would be Davidson to Atrium and then into your location, which is common to the Hamptons. But what if they come in through Pierce and Atrium? Then you're trying to navigate that, that almost like a triangle and then go that way. So why, why did you change that? Why not keep it the way-
There's a secondary access right here that the trucks could come in and into the back.
Okay, all right, I did not see that, okay. So if they came in through Pierce, they would come in that way?
Yes.
And then, so why, why not make it in between the two ponds?
Because-
Why go through the-
If you put it between the two ponds, the maneuver would be even harder. So right now, the way we have them set up, these, these are existing roads. But now it just-
Understood.
Then that just drives right into the site, and the same thing here, this goes right through the cul-de-sac and into the site.
Okay.
If you came through the middle, now they have to turn right or left to get to the back of each of these buildings.
Okay.
So I think this is the most efficient.
All right, thank you. Okay, thanks. Review for me again the compromise, just so I can see it one more time. For the sidewalks, please.
You have sidewalk all the way along the front of this building.
Okay.
And then there's an interconnect to this building, and then there's another, so this is approximately over 800 feet.
Mm-hmm.
Then you come down over here, this is approximately 600 feet.
Mm-hmm.
So you're already at 1,400, 1,500 feet. And then this becomes a natural walkway that you walk along the top of the berm. We can even extend it back through here if we need to, but, you know, you can either come this way and out, you can come this way and out, you can come all the way around the outside, back up to this one, circle back. This is just a fire lane at this point, so then you could walk up, back up to that proposed sidewalk and get back to both buildings.
And you're still doing the sidewalk that connects to the hotel to the north, correct?
This connection, yep.
Yep.
So then this can come all the way, this will connect all the way up to the double tree.
Okay. The way I see it right now in the back and forth, I think that that's a fair compromise.
Yeah, I'm with Jennifer. I think the applicant has shown good faith, the effort to provide, or is looking for, in general, if not exactly, I think the natural berm is a, because it doesn't really lead anywhere else, so I think the natural berm, natural pathway on the berm is fine with me, and the two walkways in front and the connecting walkway to the front, I think it's adequate, in my opinion.
Ideally, we would compel the applicant on 500 Atrium, which is most of the way out to Pierce Street, to develop sidewalk there, plus sidewalk, and actually then the sidewalk in front of your larger building would very largely suffice to connect to that, and then out to Pierce Street where there are retail uses that both, that employees might want to use, that even hotel guests might want to use.
So Ted, yes to the compromise? We kind of need to kind of-
Realizing that with the sidewalk in front of the two buildings really accomplishes the purpose I just suggested, then I could say yes to the compromise.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes to the compromise. And one of the reasons is, I really don't want to create an impervious variance again because we did so much work to try to not have that, so.
Charles? No. To the compromise, I do want to offer why. I think that what you offered is not a compromise. I think that it is high-quality site development, which is what we should be encouraging in Franklin anyway. The, what you perceive as an off-site sidewalk is actually being kind to your neighbor and providing opportunities for the hotel guests to be mobile without fearing for their life in that area. And I think as a neighbor in this site, you have that responsibility if you care wholly about the future of Franklin.
I'll go for the compromise. I think it establishes, it accomplishes our purposes for now, and it can eventually go on Atrium Drive toward Pierce Street as the street develops. I think in some ways, we're, we're over-concerned about transient guests in hotels. You want to have a good hotel experience because you don't want them to go out of business. But again, as the council pointed out, I don't see any representative from either of those facilities here expressing any concerns whatsoever about anything, but I'll go for the compromise.
I agree to the compromise.
Now, we need to pull together a motion which would be to grant preliminary and final site plan approval, together with the variances requested, subject to the voluntary condition that the applicant bank 105 parking spaces, the voluntary condition that the applicant will use best efforts to save the four trees that Ted was referring by the southern basin, the condition for the compromise sidewalk that was laid out in Mr. Steyer's testimony. What else? Oh, and, and how could I forget the road? The road is the subject of a condition for the execution of a developer's agreement mutually satisfactory to the applicant and to the board's professionals that will involve the township engineer's examination of the condition of the road with recommendations, and also for the applicant to bear some equitable distribution of costs for the other portions of Atrium Drive. Also, the, they will pave their portion of the drive that is on their site, together with all of our usual conditions.
I will make a motion that encompasses what Jim just said, in compliance with all staff reports.
I'll second.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Starting your mics off after you vote. Jennifer Wagnell?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
No.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Ahia Rafique?
Yes.
Herman Marcini?
Yes.
I think our business is wrapped for tonight, so I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.